If all you're going to have is passive parks, then you don't really have a need for storage. But we don't intend on having just passive parks. We intend on having parks and plazas and things that aren't actively used, where we have furniture that we put in and out, then we have sound equipment that we use. And so, so we want a mechanism to be able to provide that storage that's effective in cost efficiency, efficient and functional. So this is not uncommon. I mean, this is, like I said, we have these storage facilities in Kendall Yards for seven or eight years. Excuse me, not additional. Kendall Yards was fundamentally different than the farm. Well, no, I'm just saying, they both have a container.
No, no, understandably.
They both have a container, and I'm just talking about the development regulations related to it. Obviously, obviously, they're different projects.
Right.
But again, you can hear my arguments and you can buy them or not, you know? The thing I want, you know, everyone here to understand is that the farm's not going away. The utility gardens are not going away. The need to have cold storage doesn't disappear. It is there, it's real. And so you have to understand, and I don't want it to be a surprise to anybody, that the containers go away and then something like a two-car garage goes up. And then now we're complaining about the two-car garage instead of complaining about the containers. We felt like the containers were the least impactful. Other people may have disagreements about that, you know, but they're only eight feet high, the fence is six feet high.
They're nine, nine-four.
Excuse me. They, they're nine feet four high and their fences are six feet, so they see three feet of it or whatever. But you're going to see 24 feet is what you're going to see if we put a building with a picture up there. So that is what it is, you know, and I just don't want there to be any misunderstanding because I think there's a feeling that if these containers are not allowed, that somehow the whole idea is going away. Maybe it's not going away.
And that's another question. You said that the HOA owns the property and the property is being leased by a nonprofit. But what happens if the HOA decides not to lease, not to extend the lease? Then the farm potentially could go away.
Yeah, well, there's a, there's a, the lease that's been entered into is long-term and there's a number of renewal options. So it's not going to go away in 50 years. Okay, so it's not, you know, it's not going away. And the thing is also, you have to understand that the homeowners association agreed to this. They, they're in favor of it. There may be people within the association that don't favor it, but the board favored it. This has come up. This is not some surprise, okay? This has been discussed extensively at the last two annual meetings of the homeowners association. So it's not, the board of the homeowners association is fully aware of this and they approved it, so.
Hold on, Charlie, Jim, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I had a comment for Mr. Frank.
Go ahead.
Okay. So on my controversial issues, I always refer to my wife. And so Cheryl and I drove by the area this afternoon. And as we drove by, she said, oh, look, that's where they stored the winter globe stuff. And the reason why she knew that's where they stored the winter globe stuff is because there's winter globe stuff flowing out of the container. And honestly, when I first drove by, I thought maybe it was a trash container. So, and my wife's view is she says, oh, those containers are just ugly. Now, but I say, if you stipulate that you got to have a container, and I would stipulate that you got to have a container because you got stuff that's got to be stored. So then you have a choice, well, where are you going to store this stuff? And, and I can see why a storage container would be very effective, but can it be kind of?
Concealed?
Concealed? I mean, I, I mean, and those storage containers were right on Indiana.
Yeah.
And so I would think there would be a way to conceal, but don't have crap flowing out of the storage container, it looks like a trash container.
So let me just explain a little bit the background of that, because that's not our stuff. It's, it's the non-located group, it's a nonprofit group. I don't want to precise them. It, it's a nonprofit group that, that runs the Christmas lighting thing. They came to us and they asked us, they said, we need to store our stuff. And could you provide us some land to store it on? And so we agreed to it. We were like being good neighbors, okay? And we agreed to it. But we did try to set some standards with them that have not been completely adhered to. But we have been working with them and we've been working with the city. And I don't know the details of it because my son Joe's been more involved, but I believe that they've reached a solution with the city where on the park, some sort of permanent facility is going to be provided for them. So we're moving on from that. I can't, I agree with you 100% that what they have done there isn't the best thing in the world, but it's an important community event. Now, in our side of it, I feel like we've done a better job. There is a fence behind the greenhouse that screens the, the container that stores equipment behind the greenhouse. If there's a fence between that building and the street, and the other container is like 400 feet from the street. So we feel like they're better screening where we have them. But again, I, I'm not, this is a decision for you to make.
Right.
And I appreciate all the various factors that you have to take into consideration in making that decision.
Is the farm certified organic?
Well, we don't use pesticides, okay? We don't use fertilizers. We, we, in order to get certified organic by the state of Washington is a very complicated process and almost nobody does it anymore.
Okay.
Because it's a huge amount, but I can tell you that we're using a no chill, no fertilizers, no pesticides are being used.
I drove the road that's on the eastern side between the farm and the utility lines. I drove that a couple of times just to see for myself what was going on. Couple of questions. How far east was the leasehold boundary go? Does it go to the utility lines or underneath the utility lines at the edge of that course?
So there's a 50-foot utility and there's a 50-foot power line easement.
Okay.
And most of the trail is inside of that, a vista power line easement, but it doesn't extend east of the trail. Maybe it varies a little bit from maybe five to 10 feet on the east side.
Would you, could you, is there any restriction in the easement document that would prohibit you from relocating or locating any structures to the east side of the leasehold area to get them away from that residential boundary?
Well, we, when we planted the property, we provided an additional 50 feet of open space between the power line easement and the houses that are there. So we, when we dedicated that face of the project, we added 50 feet so that there's more room there. And we did that because we knew that we were going to need buildings and so forth. And we, we can't build buildings underneath the power line easement, so we provided land on which to do it.
So now, could I? Is there space on the east side of the leasehold? If you wanted, if you wanted to build buildings, is it building away from that residential property line?
Well, we, we, we own the property.
I understand.
So, but it's not property that's owned by the association. So we could, we own the property, so we could do that. But all we're doing is moving it from one residential area to another.
Well, but you've got, well, that's not necessarily true. I don't want to be argumentative with you, but you have a, you have, you have the utility easement between, you have the leasehold area, the utility easement, and then you have additional residential area, correct? To the east.
Well, from, from west to east. We have the residential area and then a fence, and then we have 50 feet of common area, and then you have a power line easement, and then you have the trail, and then you have vacant land. That vacant land is going to be developed into houses. There's a street that's going to run on that side of it, just like on the other side. So the curb return is already there. When you, when you're out there looking at it, the curb return to that new street is already there. So there's a road that will parallel the, the, the power line easement on the east side, and then houses will back up to the power line easement on that side, just like it does on the west side. So of course it's possible to do that, but all you're doing then is making a more complex problem because there's houses going to be on that side too. So from our standpoint.
Did the leaseholder approve, did the leaseholder approve the location of all those blue containers? Housing the Christmas decorations?
That's not, nothing to do with this association. It has nothing to do with the association, if not on the association property.
What else could land on that property? You have a lease.
The lease is on the power line easement land and the 50 foot that we added. That's what the lease is on. It's not on any land that's east of the pathway.
So the blue containers are not in the leaseholder area?
No. No, that's, that's a completely separate issue.
Does Greenstone have any other plans for putting any other storage facilities on land that isn't either A, in the utility easement, or B, under the farm lease?
We don't have, as far as this particular power line greenway goes, we don't have plans for any other structures, any other storage. We don't need any more storage other than what we have. But on some of the other property, like, I just want to use an example, in the town center area, as part of the town center area, we would like to have a little event venue there as part of that, somewhat similar to the nest at Kendall Yards, and a place that you could have music events and that kind of thing. So there's a plaza there that comes off of the street, and then that plaza looks out at the Spokane River. So you've got the beautiful views of the Spokane River. And we would like to be able to have events there. And having events means that we'd like to have, possibly use a container to store equipment necessary for that kind of a facility. So it's possible that one could be located there if you approve this. If you didn't approve it, then we have to find some other solution to the storage.
Okay. Mr. Frank, is that the one that's shown on your, your map that you presented? Is that the one, that's the one on, on Wild Ride Street? Um, is that what you're talking about, that's looking at the river?
Uh, that's a different one, but.
Oh, okay.
That particular one, I don't think we see a need for equipment storage on that one. Because that's an expansion, that's an expansion of the trail.
So that's the one you just talked about, would that be part of the open space?
It would be, in the future. One of the things I mentioned is that we've only, as part of this zone change, we're only changing the zones on open space areas that we've already dedicated.
Okay, okay.
But there will be future dedications, and when we dedicate them in the future, then we would come to you and ask that those be included in the, in the open space designation. The problem, we haven't been doing it right now, is that we don't have a proper legal description for those parcels. And without a proper legal description, we can't, we can't create a zone for them.
So if, using that approach, Jim, are aware that you're going to have to do a zone change every time?
Yes, I am aware.
Are all of the folks that you mentioned that work in the garden, are they from the immediate neighborhood? Or do some of them drive in?
They're all from, all the volunteers are from, I mean, the manager is not from. Whitney Jox is the manager, she does not live in the River District. All the volunteers live in the River District. All the people that have signed up for a farm box, a weekly farm box, they're all from the Liberty Lake area. The large majority of them are from the River District area. We have no intention of selling, this isn't advertised around the city or anything like that. The, the purpose is to provide access to food for people that live in the River District and Liberty Lake, and that's it. So we don't make an attempt to sell outside of that area. We don't make an attempt to market it anyway outside of that area. We do go to the Liberty Lake Market to let people have access to it from the Liberty Lake Market, and we want people to be aware of it if they want to stop by and pick something up. But this is not, this is intended to be a benefit and amenity for the community. It is not intended to be anything more than that.
Are there any more questions? I may, I have one question, Mr. Frank. You, in your design center, Frank, here, you have requested by, by proposal to not include permitting when you have large functions as you want that to be what that property already should be permitted to do. My question with that, and I understand your thought process, at least of that concept, but one of the things when we're looking at that, we look at notification to the city for either additional law enforcement or any other support the city needs to do for traffic controls or crowd controls or any of that kind of stuff. Was, I didn't see anything here that would address how that would be handled, and I, I think that might be something missing.
We, I'm glad you raised that, I meant to mention it, but we've been working with the city staff. The city staff is working on a new set of standards for community events. And in our conversations with them, we think that those standards are acceptable. So we told the staff that we will withdraw that language out of, out of our proposal, and we'll follow whatever the city language is. We were, I mean, I'm sure Lisa would be the first one to say that the regulations around community events are confusing and problematic, so they're going through a process of revising that.
It works with me, yeah.
Yeah, we've had our own problems with it.
Sure.
You know, and we felt like they were so restrictive that they were chilling, I mean, chilling effect on events, so we just wanted that fixed, but the staff has fixed it, we believe. And so we will, will abide by those regulations, so the, the city regulations on community events.
Okay. Any other commission questions?
Thank you very much.
Anything you want to add at all at this time, or should I join in on a public comment?
Well, so I would, I would just like to ask the public, have you ever seen some yellow cards from people who wish to speak? If anyone else wishes to speak, if you'll fill out a yellow card and hand it to Amy. I'll hold the ones I have in the shooting program here. We, and Amy's also going to, once we talk, once we give people the opportunity to speak within the room here, we will also be giving, we will also be giving people online an opportunity to speak. So if you're interested in speaking and you're online, you can raise your hand. And Amy will be monitoring that, so.
Mr. Frank, thank you for your presentation. I didn't get to say that before we sat down.
So the first person I've listed, by the way, we are going to do this with a timer. Unfortunately, I cannot have the Zoom meeting up and the timer up at the same time. Yet, can you do that? So we will be asking that you limit your comments to three minutes. We do have another workshop to get through on sign code and landscape changes as well. So the first person I've listed to speak is Renee DeBronzo.
I'm not going to speak. I, I sent my, the information in emails.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next person I have listed to speak is Katie Harris.
Hi, I'm a part of the Liberty Lake Scope and volunteering community in part of the River District. I also participated in the farm, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to Jim Frank for developing such a great community for us. Same streets, lighting, the boulevards with the trees. It's a great place to live. First of all, I love where they live, right? But he's really gone over, overboard in developing a great community for us, and I really appreciate it. I guess I, I feel bad that some people are a little bit upset about the containers, but I feel like there's ways we can work around it. I moved from Spokane about 18 years ago in the city, and I had a lot of trees around me, and when I came here, it felt weird not having the trees. So I built some trees in my backyard, and now neighbors can't see me. I can't see them as my private, you know, secret garden. So I, I think there's ways for people in their yards to put trees up if they'd rather see that. I just think there's a lot of ways that we can solve these problems. And I'm all about creating community where we're talking. Maybe we need to have some more community gatherings, maybe at the new coffee shop, and talk about, this was very informative, and I think it was a very positive thing for Jim Frank to come here. So maybe there's more people that want to talk to him and hear about his future plans to dispel any, you know, things that they're concerned about. I did research a little bit online, it did say urban farms actually add to the real estate. They actually help increase real estate values. So that's something awesome too. So I just want to thank you so much for all you've done, and I think any of these problems, I'm so glad you're here to help us work it out, and so we can all have a very positive experience in our community.
Thank you.
The next person I have listed to speak is Betty Zerba.
Thank you, since Renee has given up her time. I have printed this out for you all, and it will take me about six minutes. Am I awarded that?
No, you're a three minutes.
Seriously?
I am.
People know that, but.
I'm sorry, three minutes.
Okay, I'm going to talk really fast. So I appreciate being here and speaking to you. And you've heard from Jim Frank, and now I'm here kind of representing the entire Orchard Place community where I live. So my name is Betty Zerba, and I've lived in our River District home since July of 2012. Few homes were built in our area of Orchard Park at that time. Over the next couple of years, after moving into our new home, apple trees, other plants and grass were planted behind our house, stretching further down the green space behind the neighbor's fences and leading north to the Centennial Trail. The space between our back fence and the vista power lines was described to us homeowners as green space in which no other structures or homes would ever be built because of the power lines. As such, other homeowners that parallel to the power lines and ourselves paid a cheap premium for our lots. And one thing to think of, if Jim is planning on building a two-story building right behind our house, I think it is going to be underpartedly powered lines. Last year in spring of 2022, someone came to our door and told us that a small greenhouse would be built to teach school kids about growing plants and would benefit the community as an amenity. That's it. Greenstone still did not tell us a huge greenhouse would be built, plus ugly cargo containers and a farm building right behind our home. We were never informed that there would be any hearing before the city of Liberty Lake permitted these buildings. We were in the dark when the buildings and cargo containers appeared. The homeowners in the River District were not informed that all utilities, including electricity, gas and water, were placed in the HOA name. The HOA is paying for these services. And Jim misspoke. We, the residents of Liberty Lake, only have one person on the HOA board last year, and it is going to be turned over to us during a period of four years. A change in zoning from residential to open space for the farm and the resulting permission to be able to install cargo containers or any building that Greenstone, Jim Frank, wants to build or install would not only harm us homeowners that live directly behind the farm now or have views of the farm, but also impact other River District homeowners living around Hatmood Park as well as River, you know, Park.
Yeah, like three seconds, but.
Okay, I'll get to the last page, guys. So what are the negative impacts? So this is determination that cargo containers and metal caterpillar covers must be removed. Cost of the infrastructure, road, police, fire, access, maintenance. It, it is my understanding that Jim wants to extend the farm down by the other park, and I believe that the value of us property owners that back right up to the farm, our value of our property goes down. Now, if Jim had put those containers way over instead of right behind our house, we probably wouldn't be having a problem.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
The next person I have listed to speak is Kim Schmidt.
Hello. You know, I do live on Ludbrook. I don't live immediately behind the farm, but there's literally just one house between, and I can walk there directly around the corner in about 30 seconds. So this really does affect me. I want a couple points of clarification. I know this is going to be a long process. It's not going to be resolved this week or even in a couple of weeks. But it seems to me like some terms, like community garden versus the farm, are possibly being used interchangeably. Let's not mince words, this farm is a business, okay? I can't just, as a neighbor, walk around the corner and go grab some arugula to make a salad. I need to pay for that arugula to make a salad. Therefore, how is this going to impact my fees? I'm already paying $196.56 or 50 cents a month in HOA fees. I am a single individual who works in healthcare, who cannot afford to pay any more than that for HOA fees every single month. So I have a lot of concern about this. I understand the concerns of my neighbors who have these buildings behind their yard because it does look, quite frankly, really trashy. I walk past the farm nearly every day. I love walking past the farm, I love seeing all the critters and those plants early and all that stuff, but is the cost actually worth it? And what are we paying for this? Is what is Greenstone, the developer, a huge business staying for? So thank you.
Good job.
The next person I have listed to speak is Dennis Sheehan.
I'm Shane, I know if you live on East Quilbrook, but I'm on the corner of Hall and East Quil. Excuse me. The thing I want to point out is just like Betty did, is the board members approved the farm in the beginning. They were all Greenstone people. Only recently, you know, last couple of years, they're starting to change with some of the members of the community on the board, just want you to know that. And the other thing about it is, if, if you were to shift it to the east side of that walkway, at least the new homeowners, we know that there's a farm there, not having a farm down behind them after they moved in and were told they weren't going to do it. It doesn't directly affect me, but I appreciate what they're going through. I just want to emphasize that. If it was moved to the east, the homeowners would know they're getting a farm in their backyard, not these folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everyone I have listed to speak with. Did anyone else in the room want to have an opportunity to speak?
I'll say.
And I'll ask you to fill out the yellow card afterwards.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just be real polite, my name is Bonnie Burns.
I certainly will. Thank you. I'll just be real polite. My name is Bonnie Burns. And the farmer's directly behind my house, the fact that you had, shows you we have the greenhouse, which we were told be small, it's about, I don't know, nine hundred square feet. We had one container. It used to be two. I guess it was the original farmers that took the blue container and were going. The point is, it does affect the value of our house. If we were to sell our house, because that was the option we were given, be a team player, or sell, move. I don't think you would pay what the house is worth if you saw the structure of a farm behind you. When we first moved up here, all I said is I wanted the house on the corner, nobody behind me, and lots of windows. And Greenstone had it. It was beautiful. Loved it. They painted it beautiful green and put up these apple trees. Great, because that's what I asked for. Paid premium price for that lot. We paid extra. So if you go by the farm now, it's by the trail, it's dirt. It's got weeds. It's rocky. And it does have a little bit of farm. It's not much there, except the containers and then some of the farming and this caterpillar thing. It's under the wires. It scares me anyway. But it's just ugly looking from what we have before. And I think the people that live across on the beautiful condos or townhouses and they have to look out and see a row of dirt and then a few rows of green, this is not pretty. It doesn't match the Greenstone area like it should. And I'm really disappointed in what I have to see from my backyard. But I'm also disappointed when you look behind you. And God forbid I ever had to sell that house, I know it's not going to be something a homeowner wants. I don't think any of you would want this right behind your castle. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So we have some people online. Can I ask if there's anyone online who wishes to speak? Can you please raise your hand? I'm not seeing anything. Are you, Amy? Right, um, and, um...
We'd like to ask some questions.
Oh, yeah, a question. Couple of questions came up. Thank you for your comments. That was helpful and it's, I know just by the crowd that we should have had treats. First of all, is the greenhouse considered to be a temporary or permanent structure? Like this, right?
So actually, it is a permanent structure. The argument was that it was going to be a temporary structure because it could be taken down and moved but under building code because it was going to be up to longer than six months. We did have to look at things like load, snow loads, those sorts of things. So we actually, under international building code, it's considered a permanent structure. Avisa had to sign off on it because of the overhead power lines. And they signed off on it because in Avisa's world, it was considered a temporary structure. And part of the requirement was they would have to take it down at any point that Avisa directed them to do so.
So as a permanent structure, it went through the whole permitting process? And how did that permitting process, which zone did it fall into where it was approved?
So it is in the River District Residential Zone, which is the equivalent of an R2 zone in the city. And again, agriculture is a limited use. Small-scale agriculture is a limited use in that zone in the River District. And so this was an accessory structure in support of that. So it did go through the building process. Because of the size, it was exempt under our review standards. And therefore, there was no CBA, there was no notice of application, none of that because it was an exempt structure.
So the second one is, and this was a comment, I have to go around the corner and I gotta pay for my roofing. So it sounds as though there is an ongoing business activity there. Mr. Frank alluded to that and one of the speakers certainly alluded to that. Is, how is that allowed inside of an R2 zone?
The same way retail, a neighborhood cluster retail is allowed within the R2 zone. So the Versailles Pizza and the Sweet Treats and the restaurant, those sorts of things on the corner there, that's also an R2 zone. It's a use that's allowed, neighborhood commercial is allowed in his own matrix just as small-scale agricultural uses are allowed. So it was consistent with the use is allowed in his own.
So this is unique to River District. It's not our...
It is unique to River District.
So the structure, however, when they developed this structure, they didn't just put it up overnight and then ask for permission later?
Well, they kind of did. They kind of did. We called them on it and said that we needed a permit. They were of the opinion that it was a temporary structure. And we were of the opinion that based on international building code, it was actually a permanent structure. So they did go through the permitting process, but there was a little back and forth on that.
For the two permanent structures that are there, the greenhouse and the shop?
That's correct. Both of those were permitted.
And doing a small neighborhood type business is also part of the code in the River District? So once again, the Greenstone has not been in violation of that?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Mr. Frank. I know a few of you, full disclosure, I have received baskets of vegetables from that farm. And I should say they're delicious. I also pay HOA dues of three hundred and eight dollars a month. So I would like to treat places with the young lady that spends a hundred and ninety-two. Nonetheless, I would like to know if the consideration for this type of screening that would mitigate the homeowners and the Greenstone folks mitigate that area so that the impact on your resale value, as well as the impact to the estates of the community, were improved, let's say, so that the screening would indeed screen all of that area and still have value not only to the area, but to the people who own in the area and to the Greenstone projects. Sometimes the screening does help. The particular trees can be those that, of course, it may be to the cost of Greenstone to mitigate those, to protect your values in your homes. That's just something I'm not sure if your community has discussed it or if you were, if you're intending on having other workshops. That might be something just off the cuff to think about. It is of value to both sides of the equation. And always when we look for solutions, we look for solutions not for one side, but for both sides. So that could be something you would discuss down the road. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Kim, let's move on with our agenda. We have one more on the River District landscaping and sign code amendment. Mike Carroll. Like it's quarter after five. We adjourn at six. This is a workshop and we'll meet that schedule, so just plan accordingly. I will probably stop you around fifteen minutes prior to, maybe ten minutes prior to, just so we can finish a couple items.
Yeah, I think I can go through my presentation about fifteen minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have time for answering questions? Good afternoon. My name's Mike Carroll. I'm a landscape architect and planner based here in Liberty Lake. I'm a consultant for Greenstone Corporation. My involvement in River District goes back to the writing the River District Specific Area Plan, so I'm very familiar with it. Present, what we're talking about tonight is basically some tweaks to, tweaks to the landscape section of the River District Specific Area Plan, but also establishing a sign code which was not established from the River District Specific Area Plan with the bottom. And we've had a number of conversations. Watching.
I don't know. I'm having problems with the video.
I've been watching my presentation go back and forth.
Everything behind the first image is gone. It's white. So I'm gonna try and reopen this document. I'm sorry.
It'd be a long, boring conversation if we don't have.
I'm working on it. I'm sorry.
I do have a hard topic. I could hold up. So the two pieces we're gonna talk about tonight is the landscape, adjustments to landscape code. One of the things that we've done most recently in the last month was work with staff in reviewing our proposed changes to the landscaping standards for the River District Specific Area Plan. And we've got some back and forth. We've got some more back and forth that we need to do. And this is really born out of practical experience. Permitting projects, having staff review it, having design changes and then trying to make sure that we're all working on the same page as far as understanding what the code says and understanding what we're trying to implement. On the signage, we've got some minor things within the sign code, mostly about location and size of signage that we feel is important to have an adoption of a sign code for River District that we feel, based on conversations with staff, is an interim measure that would be replaced by an overall City of Liberty Lake sign code, which we're very supportive of, making sure that there's consistency throughout. But we're looking at an interim measure for signage for River District to cover some of these things that need to be adjusted now. So maybe we could stop right there. Yeah, stop at the goal. So we've heard a lot of conversation about River District. I just want to take a step back. The River District Specific Area Plan was developed as a set of guidelines, a set of standards to develop River District. So, and this goes back a number of years and has guided the development of River District over time. And so what you see in River District right now, for instance, was talked about a little bit. Lisa talked about the neighborhood retail cluster where the pizza place is, where you can get coffee and ice cream. Those are very specifically identified in the River District Specific Area Plan as opportunities. Those streets weren't even there when that was envisioned. The plan was just, the plan established a zone and within that zone were allowed uses such as a neighborhood retail cluster. And that opportunity was established within the plan. Not only that opportunity for those neighborhood businesses that serve the community, but the boulevard, Indiana is a boulevard, the setting aside of the property for Orchard Park, the establishment of Path Moon Park and the other parks and connections to the Centennial Trail, those were all established within the River District Specific Area Plan. And so the River District was established to be a compact, complete community. And complete means that you have options for retail, have options for residential, have open space, have these connections where people can walk and get within the community without actually having to drive. Mixed-use design, both vertically and integrated within the zone, within the mixed-use, mixed-essential zone and the commercial zone. Straight sidewalks, trails provide multiple modes of connection. Again, these were put together before any of the streets and trails that you've seen were established. River District streetway corridors, functionally connected parks, open spaces, and the Spokane River Access responsive to cultural and environmental context of the region. And within that context, there's a lot of identification of what can happen in those corridors. You've heard a little bit about that already tonight. Next slide. So what we're gonna talk about is, first, some clarification updates for the landscaping, as I said. Signage standards, in order to fully implement and realize the vision for the River District, we've got some sign code, basically implementation that we need, as I said, is kind of an interim measure specifically for size and location. And there's a lot of detail. So there's, I think your package goes to eighty-four pages. A lot of that is the sign code portion. Proposed changes are consistent with the vision for the River District Specific Area Plan in the City of Liberty Lake's comprehensive. Next slide. The process to date, we submitted back in late March. Had the plant commission, I guess it wasn't workshop number one, but introduction number one back in May. We met with staff and went through a lot of the issues and tried to clarify the intent from our position and how the staff was seeing things. And that was a great meeting. So we looked at both signage and the landscaping. And so we've had some back and forth. There's gonna be a lot more back and forth. So what you have in your package today is not the end result. And Lisa indicated that we'll go through the process, talking to staff, getting your feedback. And then in September, we have the final submit that we made to move forward for approval by the plant commission and on to the city council. So.
The final has to be in by August for this.
August. August for September.
Yes, thank you.
But yeah, absolutely. So by no means is this the last opportunity for the public to have conversations or for you to review it. We'll go into here. Next slide. So in terms of landscaping, street trees, fences, what we're trying to do is clarify portions of the landscape requirements so that we have a better understanding as we submit plans to the city staff and city staff is reviewing them so that we can expedite the process, getting things approved. It's not a matter of trying to remove landscaping or reduce landscaping, trying to facilitate a more quick and efficient approval process. Next slide. So I'm gonna go through, there's, again, there's a ton of stuff in here. And so I'm gonna go through it relatively quickly so that we can, so that we can go to questions. Again, there's gonna be lots of questions down the road as well. So one of the things we're trying to do is clarify, the code requires X number of plants to be planted in a certain area. One of our challenges, and we're trying to clarify it, is when you have an electrical box, a light, a fire hydrant and other stuff in these areas, it impacts how many plants we can get in an area. So we're trying to clarify, so when a plan goes in, it takes into account those and then it gets the right number of plants to meet the city requirements, also meet the intent of Greenstone and the community to have high-quality landscaping in the community. The other thing is that as we build things together, as a project gets developed, there's additional existing landscaping that occurred for the street trees. And as we bring a project together, we want to take advantage of that existing landscaping as part of that account. So we want to have an integrated problem. New landscaping, again, the calculations available for planning areas for landscape we're clarifying. Plan requirements need additional coordination with city staff. That's one of the things we want to make sure that what is required to be submitted in a landscape plan is consistent so that staff knows what they're getting each time. We've made some suggestions on how we can create a better plan so that city staff can review it more quickly. And we've got, again, we've got additional conversations going on with that. Identification of existing landscaping to be included in the plan to meet requirements, that would be included on the plan. So again, we're trying to create a framework within the standards so that everybody knows what to expect. And we're communicating on the landscape plan what the intent is and meeting the city requirements. Bonding and assurances, one of the things we're asking for is changing for bonding and assurances from six months to nine months. One of the challenges we've had with, it's the shame now, supply chain issues and getting trees. I just got an email today that I have to redo three street tree plans because we cannot in no uncertain terms get the trees that be specified that we could have gotten five or ten years ago that are on the same street tree list. So we've got, so one of the things we're asking for is a little bit more time to implement with the bonding to get those extra three months, especially over winter time. So again, these So again, these are things that, that we're proposing. If, if you choose to accept them or move forward, that, that certainly have to go with the plant commission. Um, interior parking area landscaping, one of the things we've done is, uh, based upon experience of some, some different large projects. For instance, Bridge Line High School and some other projects, trying to simplify that so snow removal gets a lot, a little bit easier. And so we provide some requirements for interiors, parking lot landscaping. We're not removing trees from parking lots, but we're simplifying it as well. Alternative tree installation, which is basically, I don't know if it has ever been proposed in Liberty Lake. I don't, I don't know whether staff has seen it. We included it in the River District as, as a, a discussion point to get shading in parking lots. One of the things we try to do when we design landscaping in parking lots, get as much shading as possible, meeting with code requirements and maneuvering. But that alternative landscaping is really a shading requirement. We tweaked that somewhat too. Uh, next slide. So as far as perimeters adjacent to public rights away, location clarification, the way the language is within the code. There's some, some room for discussion or, or confusion depending on who's designing and who's reviewing, and we're trying to clarify that. So, one of, and so what I've noted is additional clarification, discussion with staff. Again, this is ongoing conversation with staff. We're just trying to get to the right answer. And so we don't know that the right one was there yet, but we've had really great feedback from, uh, staff on, on really kind of short notice. And we're taking those and we're trying to integrate those in. We'll move forward with that. Um, so one of the questions is, you have a street and you have a driveway and go into a parking lot. What's the landscaping requirement on the side of the driveway? And so our review that we've taken is that's not a parking lot and the right way is here. You need to have a specific screening on the side of the driveway. And so we're trying to clarify that. And that's one of the conversations we're having with staff is, you have a driveway, you really need to be screening something one side or the other, or is there other landscaping? Uh, takes, takes that into account. One of the things I think we see going forward is we're going to, we'll show you a plan and these are the areas that we're talking about. So, so that we can kind of clarify that. So some illustration will be helpful. Uh, regarding this, this, existing requirements for screening and incorporation of street trees, got that conversation as well. Sometimes we have, uh, where the perimeter landscaping would come up right where street trees are. And if you have landscaping right next to each other, you have conflicts between the trees and the landscape requirements. So if you're required to put trees in your screening and you have a street tree, you have trees really close together. So we need to clarify that as well. Um, the next one, perimeter not adjacent to public rights away, location clarification, portion of the parking lot not adjacent to either the right way or, or structure. We're having additional conversations with the staff regarding the location relayed of the building in proximity to, to the exterior wall. Um, this, this I think is one that we've got a lot of work to do to figure out. And again, having a plan that says, okay, this is sort of what we're talking about will be a good, good thing to move forward on. So again, collaboration and clarification with staff so that, uh, plans are not only clear going in, but also reviewable. And so we have a common, common set of language that we're working on. The next one, uh, mixed residential zone buffering. What we found is that, that the mixed residential zone and the, the commercial zone are virtually the same. And so having a buffer, um, of the size that's, that's indicated here is unnecessary. And so we're proposing for that to be eliminated. And it only occurs in a couple of places. We can go into detail, uh, later on and provide an exhibit where that is. But it's not a lot of locations within River District. It's actually just a couple of talk along Indiana. Um, then, then talking about screening mechanical equipment, clarifying that. Uh, something that's sitting on the ground, screening of, of mechanical equipment, what the requirements are for that. And then we basically added a prohibition of chain link fences with slats for meeting the screening requirements. Because we think that's not consistent with the, the, the standard for River District. The next one is talking about landscape, uh, materials. This is, this is actually probably the easiest part of it because it's really consistent with, with our vision and certainly consistent with the city's vision. Uh, native and adaptive plant materials required. Uh, one of the things we wanna do with the city's trees, again, this is a supply chain for nur- for nurseries. Is to reduce the size from two inch to inch and se- inch and three quarters. We're having a really difficult time getting trees, um, during the, the oh nine, ten recession, a lot of nurseries went out of business. So trees are really hard to come by. So if we can expand that, so we can get a little bit smaller tree. And our experience has been that smaller trees actually perform a little bit better than, uh, larger trees over time. Um, and then we've got additional, there's additional requirements about separation between trees and utilities, light poles and things like that. Um, I think part of staff's comments has, have been, hey, let's get all this consolidated in one spot so that we're, we're clear. These are what the rules are. And that's something we'll work out with them as well. Uh, and that's the next slide, really dive into that as well. Um, what we're trying to do is say, these are the rules. Thou shalt not plant a tree within fifteen feet of light because we want the light to, to shed light on the ground. So we're, we're going through with staff to correct those, those issues and clarify those things. So that we get some clarity on where we can plant trees and what the differential between a fire hydrant, a tree, a driveway edge, and things like that is. Okay, science. So this is, this is actually probably the, um, could potentially be uncommercial. We did, we chose not to go forward with a, a River District specific area plan signage, uh, set of standards and regulations when it was first proposed. Because the city was, um, the city rightfully so wanted to have one signing standard hard enough to, to, um, regulate. Signage, let alone having two different standards. But we found that there is, there are some very specific areas that we need some inner, um, some interim relief and some flexibility. So that we can go forward. And what we, what we're proposing is a set of River District signing standards. That are very similar to the city. It's based on City of Liberty Lakes code. Knowing that the city, the city's signage code is going to be revised in twenty four, twenty five, something like that.
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four. Um, so again, we're looking at this as an interim. So we, we think there's some, some immediate things that, that really need to be taken care of, adopting the sign code. And, and perfectly willing to work with the city to, to pull this back and have it, and work with them as they, as they revise the signage code for the whole city. And meld this all together. So. Um, so again, we're looking at size and location. We know that, uh, and not trying to do anything that has anything to do with content. Recognizing that, that the whole package that we're submitting is not content neutral because the city's code is currently not content neutral. But we're trying to get clarity on some of the size and location of signage so that we can, can move forward. Uh, next slide. So in summary, they're developed to be more effectively responding to the needs of small businesses, pedestrian oriented areas. The key, key elements, um, are clarification of the prohibited signs, some tweaking on, on those. Uh, A-frame signs, tweaking those, especially with the size, because there's a standard size for A-frame signs and it's six square feet, not five square feet. And so that clarifies, it makes it so it's less onerous on a business. Uh, creating options for, for A-frame signs to be located in different places that again creates options for businesses to be successful. Uh, commercial off premise signs are prohibitive except as permitted. So there's some, some very specific language for that. Um, permit requirements. And so one of the things we're looking for is some relief from some of the permit requirements for some of the common everyday kind of temporary signs. And so we can, we'll dive into that as well. Uh, no permit for any sign located within a building. Uh, so if your open sign is hanging inside your window, you don't need a permit for that. Uh, no permit for temporary construction signage, no permit for community event signage to facilitate community events to, to more easily be, um, uh, put. Uh, temporary real estate, freestanding signs, standards, again, some other things to get, get those, uh, clarity on that. Some of these are, again, very interim. So as, as River District develops out, a lot of those will go away anyway. The next slide. So one, one thing we're doing with examples, uh, for exempt signs is adding that an A-board sign not more than, um, shall be not more than six square feet. And that's, that's basically permitted outright. Um, temporary signs not more than H square feet, not located in a street item with a traffic circle. Those are allowed. Um, delete temporary signs and temporary sign permit requirements for banner signs, real estate signs, political signs. Trying to get, get some clarity on there. Uh, reduce the administrative burden on, on folks trying to, to do short-term stuff. But also reduce the number of, of permitting, uh, processes the city has to go through as well. Uh, one of the things we've added is temporary banners on, on streetlight fixtures not to exceed H square feet with, have it without a permit. And that's, you see those in a lot of, a lot of downtown core areas. Uh, you have a streetlight with a sign on it, a banner sometime either, um, you know, advertising the Fourth of July or something like that, or on, and the other side a basket of flowers. So those are the types of things that, that we're, we say, that should not have to be permitted. That should be allowed outright. Um, signs permitted also in connection with specific, uh, uses. Temporary real estate signs for the larger development. So we're trying to clarify those rules. So that, so that signs advertising that, that River District is being developed can be allowed outright. Then signs, uh, then additional, some clarification on the size of signs, temporary signs over H square feet require a temporary sign permit. So if you have an H square foot sign, um, it's fine, but if it goes larger than that, then you need a temporary sign permit. Uh, temporary real estate sign limited to a size of six, uh, square feet from five, uh, square feet. So getting that up. So it's two by three. Uh, temporary sign permit required for signs over H square feet. And then next slide. And this is really just kind of changing the sizes a little bit and making sure that they're photovoltaic. Uh, adding under, for all zones, specific uses, temporary real estate freestanding signs over H square feet. Require a temp sign permit. It's, it's, you can see the theme. It's like, let's establish what the rules are and then allow these folks, uh, put up signs. And if it goes over that, then they have to come in for a permit. Uh, next slide. Community event slide, signs, uh, sign size six square feet from five square feet. Again, changing that size, again, no content issues, just the size and location. Next slide. So in the residential and open space zone, tenant signs that are on a projecting mall storefront and wall sign dimensional standards. And projecting sign definition standards, we clarified those. So we're, we're improving that. Uh, sign standards for the, the mixed use and the commercial, clarified information about tenant signs, window signs, building projecting signs. And we, we'll talk about blade signs in a lot more detail. Uh, next slide.
I, I have no idea where you are.
You are close. One more. There you go. You're, you're keeping up. I appreciate it. So blade signs, one of the things that, clarifying in blade signs because, um, the code is written, uh, such that the location of a blade sign on a building is dependent on whether it's one story or two story. There's some limitations on that. We're trying to clarify that as well. So basically allowing, uh, a blade sign to be, um, have no max height of the sign, increase the size to thirty square feet. Um, when approved by the city plant commission. So there's, there's a size that's already established, but if design review, reviews it, it can go up to thirty square feet. Uh, max height above sidewalk grade can be increased with approval. Uh, sign cannot extend above the roof line or parapet wall regardless of number of stories. So if you have, right now it's set up, if you have one story building, it can only go up. It, it can't extend above the parapet wall. But if you have a two-story building, it can't, can't extend above a sill. So it, so you can't go higher, uh, to meet the parapet wall or be below the parapet wall on a two-story building. So we're looking for flexibility on that. Eliminate the limitation of sign location related to multi-story buildings. And eliminate the restrictive blade sign separation setback. That's allowing some additional flexibility for multi, uh, multi-tenant buildings that are like along the street front and, and on Indiana. Is that, is Indiana's built out to great flexibility to give businesses the best opportunity to have a sign for their business out where the public is seen. And again, and the, the way the, the code is set up, these repeat. So, so it goes from one to the next. So, so different sections, the RDR and then the RDM. So they're simpler things. So we are now, that work to sign standards and other zone, which should be the next, we're making two very, yep. So primary wall clarification, one of the things, one of the things that you have in, in a more urban kind of small environment is that a primary wall of a building could be, say, on Indiana, or it could be on an alley plaza opening, or it could be on a public space behind it. So there's some clarifications that we needed for that. Because it, it isn't always just, you have a front and a back and two sides. It could be a front and, and a, and a back that it, that actually has businesses on it. So we want a clarification there as well. Um, business A-boards, creating options for businesses to have two A-boards and have those located so they can be successful. Um, next one. Um, sign setback clarifications, this is one that we will probably have a lot more conversation with, with staff on. Uh, ten foot from the curb or edge of pavement, a setback reduction somewhat. Um, sign area calculations, one of the things that, that is always a challenge for, for staff to review. Is you could have, um, for instance, the flag of the state of Washington is all green background and then, but this is the sign. What do you calculate? Is count the whole green or do you just count the center with the word on it? And so that's a clarification, or an artistic extension beyond the sign, does that count as the sign or is it just the words that are part of the sign? So there's clarification there. Uh, again, business A-boards, and these are repetitive because they show up in different sections. Um, so that wraps me up to, to my kind of summary slide. So not all, I didn't go through every little, little thing, but I covered most of them on a, at least most of the, all the big ones and most of them on some level or another. We're certainly open for, uh, discussion on specific line items, wordsmithing things so it makes sense. Uh, we, we look forward to continue, continued discussions with the plant commission and certainly with staff. So with that, I'll hook myself up for any question.
Just, I'm sorry, just a question. Oh no, I was trying to follow this thing. And, uh, in, in ten dash three C dash three, new landscaping.
Yeah.
It, uh, it refers to, uh, all landscape plans, self-conform requirements in section ten dash four C dash three. I couldn't find any ten dash four C dash three.
It's in the, it's not in River District code. That's actually in the main city development code.
That's why, yeah.
And it has, it has a whole list of all the different items that are required to be listed on the plan.
Do I care about that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, then I'd like to see.
Well, we care, we do care about it.
Well, then I'd like to see it, I guess, is the point.
Yeah.
So that's all.
It's very detailed and, and it's very detailed in terms of what's required from the middle. However, there are times when we can waive certain things where it doesn't make sense on a specific type of.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, that is, that's available, uh, on our development code. I can, we can certainly send that out to the plant commission to, um.
And that's, then it was about, uh, the free requirement in parking areas. That was voluntary from fifty percent to twenty-five percent. I, I was looking for that. I saw it in one of the versions. I didn't see it in the latest version. But is there a requirement from, uh, on the rest of the city?
So the rest of the city updated their landscape code back in twenty nineteen, or twenty, it was actually. twenty, it was actually twenty twenty-one, we started in twenty nineteen, but then COVID hit. And, but we, but we haven't updated, um, our code is very different from River District. River District, um, Greenstone was given the opportunity to update their landscape code to follow ours.
So that's voluntary, is that the?
What?
I'm, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, no, no. So, so what I'm saying is, what's in their code now is different. I, I, I don't know what it means to have a voluntary reduction, I, 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 I.
That was my question, okay.
I, I, I.
I don't know either.
Amy, do you want to weigh in on that? Do you have?
Well, I, I think I can answer the question specifically. It's not, it's not a voluntary reduction, it's the alternate treaty of parking requirement. So there was an alternate way to meet those parking requirement, which is provided within the River District SAP. And so that was changed from a fifty percent requirement to a twenty-five percent, that's proposed to be changed from the, to maybe get somebody to use it. It's not required, it's just an alternative, and it could go away completely, because in, in the, at least in my history of doing parking lot landscape design in Liberty Lake, nobody's ever done it. So.
Well, that, that explains it.
And then, then back to your.
It's hard, but nobody does.
Well, there's a, there's a lot of things in codes that nobody does.
Oh, you shouldn't be.
But let me go back to the first question, that where you started, was the, the landscape plan requirement. And so what you identified was something that Amy identified as well, and that's one of the things we're going to work through to make sure that it's clear in the River District landscape standards, what are required on the plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Did I understand you correctly, when you said that the Liberty Lake sign changes will take place in twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Was it based on January first, twenty twenty-four?
No, so we, 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 as a planning commission, we need to go through, we're going to, we're putting money in the twenty twenty-four budget, hire consultants, because we don't have the staff capacity, we know that it needs to be done, we just don't have the staff capacity.
That's fine. And remember, that's a content neutrality.
Yes.
Mainly, because we've just updated our sign, sign code within the last three, four years, I don't know what, what year it was.
Well, we just, we, we did a couple, we added a couple things, we had blade signs, the neon signs, and the, some, some things that had been requested by Greenstone.
And, and I misunderstood, because I, if it was going to be twenty twenty-four, what you're proposing is, it seemed that an easier fix would be to give a, a, a temporary, if everything is going to be the same, then rather than going through all of this, we just give a temporary consideration based on work that is going to take place. I didn't realize twenty twenty-four is when we go into, we, we can, we can see the baby, though we've got months before the baby is delivered.
Right. That, that's absolutely true, that is absolutely true. But, but I want to point this out, we have taken the position, we have all along um, said that, that um, there is only one sign code, because, because it's one city, um, it's very hard, there is, there's a constitutional standard related to, there has, we have to align it with purpose, a valid purpose for having a sign code has to do with aesthetic standards, and um, it's, it's hard to justify that there's a different standard on the other side of it.
Right.
And, and.
And I just don't catch that you was proposing that at all.
Well, so what we have proposed, what staff has proposed, is that if there are going to be changes, the changes should be made to the entire city sign code.
Yes.
We're not, um, we are not supportive of a River District sign code, particularly because we are going to be going through a code amendment. So my recommendation, and then what we had talked about in our meeting with Greenstone, and I actually had thought that that was, we had agreed to the fact that we would look at amendments to the sign code and would consider them as a whole, as opposed to a separate.
So, so that's actually an excellent point, because one of the things that we're, uh, we're concerned about, because we submitted a new sign code for River District. And so we are concerned that we can't just change from a River District sign code to amending the City of Liberty Lake sign code um, after the whole modding and everything. So if staff is fine with, with going forward and amending the Liberty Lake sign code to align with what we proposed, we're fully open for that, but we're concerned that, that that may or may not be possible.
So the other option would be for you to amend what you have to line up with what Liberty Lake comes up with.
If, if I may, if we can answer that, so, so there is no reason why you couldn't do that. What staff is recommending as a more viable approach than, than creating your own River District standard, what staff has proposed is that we instead look at these as citywide amendments. Now, nothing's been noticed yet, the whole, the whole thing about August is that, that's when it gets noticed. So that's, so that's where that's the hard deadline.
Okay.
And so, um, uh, uh, again, my recommendations to the planning commission is that we should not be, we should not be even considering a separate River District sign code, but the amendments that are being proposed should be looked at from a citywide perspective.
And, listen, a little bit my fault with Mike, um, because I thought that the March-April deadline for submitting comp plan amendments and code changes was the deadline, and so I was concerned that legally, we couldn't actually amend the sign code for the entire city because we had missed that date. But we have no problem with what you're talking about. I might have given Mike some incorrect information, but I thought that the March-April was, you know, the window that you have to submit.
That is, that is the window for the application for the code amendments, for, for um, privately initiated code amendment.
Yeah.
What, what's happening here is a recommendation to address this, and I'm not saying that we support all of the changes in this, all I'm saying is that, um, that staff is recommending um, at minimum that this be just amendments to the city code. And since you're in the, since you're in the process of massaging it, that is my strong recommendation to you, because I don't think that we can support a separate sign code for River District.
Yeah, we're okay with that. I, like I say, I was under the impression that because an amendment to the entire code hasn't been proposed in the window, that we couldn't do it. But you're, I was probably wrong about that, so.
This is, this is staff's recommendation to revise what you're saying.
Thank you for the clarification.
Good idea.
So they'll, they'll make the signage easier as we go through the staff to try and identify if we have common ground, and so, again.
Do you know what is a common?
Yeah.
I've, I've heard the term signage neutral several times, but I have no idea what you mean by that.
Content, content neutral, so there's, the Supreme Court has uh, given actually a number of rulings, the most recent one is what's, has everybody um, in tiz and happened back in, I think, twenty fifteen. But even before that, they had standards related to content neutrality for those things that um, will limit um, free speech. So content neutrality has, the, the, basically the way, the best way to describe it is, if you have to read the sign to know how it's regulated, it's not content neutral. And the concern, this, this standard for looking at sign codes as content neutral has, had to do with concerns about um, limiting free speech. Okay? But content neutrality, the, the ruling was very, very explicit that this content neutral was higher bar standard for evaluating the constitutionality of a particular regulation does not apply to commercial speech. So the standard um, prohibition against off-premise commercial signage, which many communities have done because people don't like billboards, that's, that's what that's about. But that sort of regulation is allowed to, it, it does not need to be content neutral. So it expressly, um, expressly exempted commercial speech from that higher threshold standard of content neutrality. So that's, so there's really quite an art to putting that together. We do have some things that, um, the way we deal with, um, political science is an example. We have to talk about temporary signs, rather than political signs, as an example. However, real estate signs are commercial speech. Um, much of the, much of, much of what we're talking about is commercial speech and not really subject to that standard. So, so we have some room to talk. But one of the things that we have to make sure of is, until we fix the defects in our sign code, that any changes we make to the sign code cannot exacerbate our issues associated with content neutrality. So that's, so that's kind of the tight rope we have to walk until we, until we uh, get a heavier, uh, a, a, a heavier fix. One of the things I will say though, is that, and I've been through this, uh, the number of communities uh, doing the code for content neutral sign, uh, sign code, Amy has done so as well, and one of the things I have to caution you on is a big lift, number one. Number two, what you get is not something that anybody particularly likes. And actually.
Yeah, let's move on, because we're, we're going to have to end a meeting here shortly, so uh, thank you for your presentation, appreciate that. Uh, quick comments, I'm going to hold these quick.
Quick comment on the landscape design guidelines.
Yes, sir.
When you come back, make sure you have some analogs that are illustrated, so we can see what's going on, comparing what your proposal is in contrast to what the current city proposal, uh, requirements are, so we can easily understand the difference.
Well, yeah, we'll do our best to do that, especially in the, the locations of the three categories of landscape, I think that'll be helpful.
And the driveway issue, the parking lot issue, absolutely. It, it's easy for you to discuss it and describe it, but how hard is it, a description, what is current practice in the city, because frankly, I think the city's doing a pretty good job. I just want to, it, it, I, I orient it that way, my perspective, so seeing it black and white in an illustrative is a lot easier to understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carroll. Uh, we're going to move on, Secretary, what?
I'm going to try and be quick here, but it's important because uh, time is moving quickly on us this year, so um, I wanted to bring up the uh, schedule going forward for our annual CPA, so August ninth, um, uh, we will have additional CPA workshops as needed, it appears that we do need, we're going to need to have, um, the revisions as proposed by Greenstone for, for their code changes on that. We also will have the language for um, our, uh, for our um, community effects permitting on there as well. So it's going to be a tight one, we may want, we may need an extra, we may need to do an extra workshop in August, I know that's a terrible month to do it, but um, we will be having our hearings in September, and um, this, this is all um, so that we can get the um, the portion of the hearing, the, the, the um, the zone change is a type four um, process, which requires a hearing before the planning commission, a hearing before the hearing examiner, and a hearing before city council. So we're trying, so in order to get this done in this calendar year, it's important that we, that we keep to this schedule. So one of the things that I wanted to, and it's a tight schedule, so one of the things I did want to uh, let you know is that um, we're amending our docket for this year, we had some other, some other things, we're not going to get to the engineering design standards and the clearing triangle, that they will be city-initiated changes that'll happen, that, that will follow, add it to our long-term, our, our long-range work program, because there's no way we can get those all, they're, they're not ready for prime time, and there's no way we can have them um, uh, worked shot in time to this hearing schedule to get the, to, for the, to address the privately initiated zone, or uh, amendments. So the ones that we are going to move forward with are the public utility, local distribution facility as a limited use in all zones, the fencing standard for essential public facilities, and the community event regulations. So those are the three city-initiated, and of course, we're going to um, we're going to move forward with um, uh, the hearings for the privately initiated changes. So I really wanted to update you on that, and it's, this is, at this point being schedule driven. So I'd like to ask uh, Mr. Carroll and Mr. Frank if you guys can be ready to, to um, uh, workshop kind of your final language uh, changes for the August ninth meeting. Um, I realize it's, it's a heavy lift, we may have to do a second meeting, um, because we also have the community event, which we're going to have to workshop with you. Um, so that, that's, thank you.
Can you, my commissioner, do you have any?
Oh, I, I just have one other thing I needed to tell everybody. Um, I'm sad to say that uh, Commissioner uh, Bolson has resigned, and just due to, to too many activities, too, too much going on, and so he has resigned, so we do have an opening. Um, anyone who is in an adjunct position has the opportunity to apply for that voting position. It is a voting position that I believe is up until the end of the year, but um, I, I, I came up with that, if anybody's interested. Anybody, I'm looking at you, Charlie, because you're the only adjunct.
That's here right now, okay.
But circle back with me, um, and we are also advertising for, for that position. So I, I, my apologies, I meant to tell you that earlier.
Okay. Can you have, can you hear anything? Uh, citizen comments, do we have any citizens that are online or in the audience that would like to speak? Nobody in the audience? Doesn't appear anybody online? Okay? Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I'm bigger than you, there.
Hi.
Okay, meeting ended.
We always get that nation in there, don't we? I know, right?
Somebody else, like, you and girl with this, nobody said that. We brought donuts, we might have said, it's like, that's the job.
Does somebody say donuts? Well, but he also said beer, and he didn't bring any beer either.
How do you know? How do you know?
I didn't see the beer license in the lobby.
We just had for them to take care of it.